Okay, I think you already started with that. Are you able to see this?
Yes, we can, I can see it.
Alright, well, I think, well, obviously, here I've studied this, alright, somewhere, some form or the other, alright, and I've, I've already started the lecturing on this, I remember this, but in this module we look at in terms of, to define what is organizational behavior, to describe what managers do, explain the value of the systematic study of organizational behavior, behavior that is, that is OB, list the major challenges and the opportunities for managers to use organizational behavior concepts. You also identify the contributions made by major behavioral science disciplines to the organizational behavior. Describe why managers require a knowledge of organizational behavior. Explain the need for a contingency, right, contingency approach to the study of organizational behavior. When you talk about contingency approach, that means you look at all aspects. Okay, not only you get one dimension, alright, you've got to have like an open system, P-Orbitus, right, made up of many parts and, 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 and aspects. Explain the three levels of the analysis, right, in his books, Organizational Behavior Module. Alright. Okay, I think we spoke much about Michael, right, Michael Bowser, alright, in terms of his, what he had learnt, right, with knowledge, right, in terms of success of those involved in management, alright. So, so importantly, dealing with organizational behavior, you've got to develop what you call good interpersonal skills, alright, interpersonal skills or, or what you call people, people skills, like human relation skills, interpersonal skills, and, and because you're also dealing, and you're also dealing with diversity, alright, because dealing with globalization. Globalization has been affecting the world for over twenty, twenty-five years, and so, so there are changes taking place and there are a lot of diversity, and, right, where, where, where people, where people, resources, knowledge, and everything else, it's flowing very freely, alright, so we're living what you call in a, in a so-called borderless world, alright. So you need that, alright, you need not only the technical skill or, or the technical knowledge, alright, but you also need that interpersonal skills, how you begin to work with each other, alright. Alright, so it's important for you to understand this. And so for our organizational behavior, it's important that, that, that actually directly linked to organizational culture, like you have culture in the natural. People belong to different cultures. Culture, as you define, culture is a, culture is a shared norms and values and practices, okay? And so, so when you go into different type of organization, for, for example, you go into a university, right, the culture at the university, in, in a, in an academic setting, in an educational setting, or industry, it's different to the one that's in a, in a engineering, what, industry, or even in a, in a, in a health industry, like an hospital, like a, like a hospital, or even, or even in a banking sector. The culture is different, because the culture and organizational behavior is what determined, is determined by the function, in terms of the vision, mission, goals, the objectives and the values of that, of that organization. Alright. And so, yes, we, we understand this, when you, when you go study people, there's a lot of focus in terms of, of what the specialized areas of, of what the studies, the various technical knowledge that you gain. But, but you say that the cause in human behavior, people skills, have received minimum attention, right, relative to the technical aspects of management. I always say to people, you know, you can be the most talented educated person in the world, you know, you're able to be, you know, results-oriented, to get things achieved, but, but if you're not, if you're not, if you're not people-centered, you're not sensitive toward people. And, 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 and understand human behavior, understand people and relate to people, because work is done through people. As much as human resource and staff and people are, right, they were one aspect of, of what resources in general, but there are many other resources that you, like, like what the capital, that's finances, like equipments, for the machines and information. Information and knowledge is one of the resources, and there's many other types of resources, but human resources is most important, you can have every other resources. But, but if your human resources is not acknowledged, is not being, what, treated well, and, and you don't relate to them properly. So it's very, very important that, the study on organizational behavior is very important, and I, and I love this study, I mean, I love lecturing and teaching on organizational behavior, organizational management, organizational development, it's absolutely important. Having, having, having an organizational structure in place, this, when you talk about structure, you're not talking about a physical building. Your, your organizational structure is based on, on whatever industry you are. What is your vision, mission, goals and the objectives? You've got to have, and structure is, is, is the area, is your business arrangement, your processes and your procedures, that's including your laws, your regulations and your policies. And that now, must now, what be, what, supported by your organizational culture. Okay? And so, so it is first and foremost the role of management and leadership. First from the senior level, that is top management. They must now create that, incorporate and, 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 and what they will, what they call accurate organizational, actually what is organizational behavior, okay? And that is, how people to work, to behave, and behavior, maybe it relates to your personality. So it's very, very important that you align people. People come from different cultures, different race groups, from different, what, genders, from different, different age, what, age groups, different backgrounds, different educational levels. So, okay, different emotional strengths, at different levels of intelligence, different perspectives, different religion, from different traditions. So, so it's important that you, got to bring them, because there's a, there were, there's a diversity of people working for you. So you've got to now align them to, in terms of organizational behavior, how they all need to work together, how they need to pull their resources together, how they need to, what, work in agreement and harmonize and make it interrelate partner and be interconnected, working together to achieve the overall vision, mission, goals and the objectives of the organization. Alright. And so, yeah, consciousness, companies with reputations as a good workplace, such as Lincoln Electrical, South West Airlines, SAS Institute, World Food Markets and Starbucks, these are all American companies, where they have a good advantage, you know, where their workforce, alright, is here. A necessary study of the US workforce found that wages and fringe earners are not the reason people like the job or stay with the employer. Far more than the, far more importantly, the quality of the employees' jobs and the supportiveness of the work environment, see, that's important. Alright. So you've got to have managers and leaders with good interpersonal skills to make the work environment pleasant, alright? And it make it easier to hire, to recruit and to keep and to, to retain qualified experienced people. You see, whenever, whenever I turn over rate, that means people are leaving organizations on a regular basis, that means they're unhappy, something is wrong. Something's wrong, they're unhappy. So, so please understand this, people's skills are very, very crucial and essential, alright? It's absolutely, absolutely important, okay? And how you begin to treat people, how you relate to people? Okay, and, and what, people are looking for value. They're looking for value, what is the value of this organization? See, there, not only vision, I also teach much on this, all I tell my students, even I teach leadership, it's not only the vision and mission that we focus on and the objectives and the goals and the objective, but goal is a, is a broad program and your, and your objectives are piecemeal approaches. That is, your projects, many project that comes out of your, your main goal, but also what is the philosophy of your organization? What is the paradigm? What is, what is the belief system? And then also what are the values? And the most important thing is you've got to, you've got to value people, you've got to value livelihood of your, of your, of your people, okay? Because if you treat people well, if the organizational behavior goes well, every other resources will be operated well. And they'll, and they'll begin to produce in terms of the results and the outcome and also the impact. Okay? So, so what is it? So when you define a manager, managers get things done through, through other people. So without, people tell you, you are nothing. And if you don't understand people and you don't be sensitive and don't work with them, you don't want to empower them and empower them and develop them, give them opportunities, then you're going to get things done. They make decision and allocate resources and direct the activities of others to attain goals. Managers do the work in an organization. This is consciously what we call a coordinated social unit, comprised of two or more people, that's what, that's what the organization is all about. Where two or more group of people working, there are different departments, units, sections, divisions. So it's basically a coordinated social unit, even though it's a business place, a place where, where you get work done, but also should be a coordinated social unit. That's what we're talking about, that's what we're talking about, organizational behavior. And everyone working to achieve a, a common goal or a, or a set of goals. Okay? No matter where you go, I have to say, different organizations, like your schools, your hospitals, universities, churches, militaries, retail stores, police departments, local provisional government, national government, in every industry, engineering, health sciences, sporting, entertainment and sporting institutions, faith-based institutions, community-based, alright? Now, if we went to this in terms of Henry Fail, alright, where, where he gives the five management functions, but basically they have four management functions, alright? But he introduced here, the one more, that's what, coordinating. But generally, when you talk about management function, they have four general management functions, alright? Alright, it's planning, organizing, leading and control. Not only they have four management functions, but they have four management stages and processes. Planning is first, you've got to plan before you organize. And you organize before you lead. And then once you've led it, then you need to also, as you're leading, you need to control it. Alright, and this involves performance management, right? This involve also in terms of you want to achieve efficiency and effectiveness. Effectiveness means doing the right thing. That is effectiveness, efficiency, they have been doing it correctly. You can be the right job, you can be in the right job, you can be using the right equipment, you can be using the right processes, but you're not doing it correctly. Alright, so you can also work the other way around. It can be the wrong job, but it can be doing something, being in the wrong position, wrong thing, but doing it correctly. So that's not good in both situation. You want to be in the right position, doing the right thing, alright, doing the right job, use the right equipment, use the right processes, use the right policies, but you also need to do it correctly. Alright, so basically the planning, alright? Since we got, okay, for people that have joined it, alright, we're doing, can tell you tonight, I know someone in Washington has joined in and, I want to, okay, okay, there's only one person joining from the second diploma, alright? But what I've decided is to do, tonight actually going to be on the, on the bachelor's, or the bachelor's second year level, get the first module on organizational behavior, alright? Okay, Peter, can I just ask, this was lecture previously, and what do you understand by planning? Anyone? How would you define planning, please in your own words?
When you envision what has to be accomplished by a certain period or within a certain period, you envision it, write it down, and you make all those involved aware of it, and they can be given an opportunity to refine it further before you implement it. So you plan, you, you decide on how you're going to achieve this certain objectives.
Okay, thank you, Padraig Jacob, that's correct. Anyone want to add to that? Feel free tonight. Management affects everyone's life. All I tell people. If you cannot get the four management function correct in your own life, it disqualifies you to man, to manage and lead other people. In fact, you're not supposed to be leading and managing other people, that's why you've got a lot of problems. Okay, because people are not, they don't, what they call, develop these functions or these processes in their lives, alright? Anyone else? Alright, so planning definitely is to define and clarify, you know, in terms of your objectives, goals and your objectives, what you need to do, alright? You also know, you need to come up with your timeframes and your, and to schedule. Okay, then what is your second step, second function, second phase, which is organizing? What do you understand by organizing?
It won't be like prioritizing, getting things, setting things in order, decide on how you're going to go, but doing or achieving those specific objectives. Put the processes in place to achieve those objectives.
Yeah, alright, okay. Anyone else want to add to that?
Is that when you set up the structure of all the departments and all the operations for the business?
Yes. Right, that's correct. Anyone else? Alright, okay, okay, this you add further to what both of them have said. Basically, basically organizing is, is to what, is to what, is to assign duties, is to allocate resources and also bring about division of work into different department units, also, as I said, also to bring order, okay? But also what, what you also divide, right, you've got to have the division of work, because also you, you're dealing with specialized functions, you can't put them all, all into one department. Okay? All, all related functions will be grouped up in one department, like your HR department, like your finance department, like your IT department. Depending, these are, these are the general departments, like your stores, okay? Your, what, retail, what, purchasing and so forth. But as you go into specialized functions, in different industry, you're, not only you have generalized department, but you're also specialized, what, department, for example, at the university, okay? You only get it, but at, at universities, you'll get what they call faculties. But faculties and also various, what they call educational departments. But when you go into hospital, when you go to hospital, those, 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 I mean, the division of work is divided into various, what, professional activities, like your cardiology, like your oncology and, and what children's ward and, and, you know, your heart division, everything, so there are various divisions, general wards. So different, when you go into different industries, you will get, you will get the general departments, like your finance, your HR, your IT, your stores, those are, those are general. But then you get specified specialized department based on your type of work and industry, alright? So not only you're going to have to assign duties, but you can allocate resources and you're going to, you're going to also bring about a division of work, alright? And then partly you're going to also make sure that everything is coordinated, alright? Alright, okay, you have a third step, a third process is leading. What do you understand by leading or leadership in this context?
That the staff should be educated or informed or trained or the different duties should be demonstrated to them to enable them to do or execute those duties correctly and timistically.
Alright, okay, thank you. Anyone else? What do you understand by leading or leadership? After you plan, after you organize? Can I get some responses from mothers as well? Please don't be afraid.
Yeah, so it's more like guiding the plan and leading, guiding.
Okay, alright, guiding, alright, anyone else? Okay, thank you for the responses. Leadership or leading is basically has, right, you must influence. You must influence them to do the right thing, go in the right direction. You must also empower them, okay, and also need to motivate them. So in leading, you go, you could, you've got to bring, bring what you call the visionary aspect, visionary aspect, alright? But you also, not only you can empower them, motivate them, influence them, but also you need to make sure there's a, there was a discipline, okay? Not only you can motivate them, but also when things that go wrong, you need to also correct. But also, there's also training and empowering people, alright? Okay, and then, then the fourth function is control. What do you understand by control?
To assess whether the staff are attaining the objectives that were set out. If they are not, then you have to guide them. If they need retraining, then retraining should be provided.
Okay, thank you, Padraig Jacob, yes, alright, to assess, okay, how the work has been done? Anyone want to add to that, in terms of control?
Apostle, I would say controlling is to alter the plan also if it is not getting to the objective as well, but because you want to get to the objective and seeing that is effective, if it's not effective, it's time to alter it slightly, that's when we do controlling as well.
Yeah, thank you, that's very true, okay, yes, not only to assess, but also, alright, you would evaluate to see whether you are doing it correctly and where there are issues, where things are not right, then you need to resolve that. Anyone, anyone want to add to that, to the control? Alright, thank you for your response regarding that. Control, yes, control is, is evaluation process, control is basically the review, or the review and to evaluate and to assess, okay? What has been done? In fact, I always say this, you're what, you're what, planning document, your planning document becomes your control mechanism. But I'm saying it again, what you plan needs to be controlled. So, so if you don't plan properly and you don't have a planning document, you don't have a planning process, so what are you going to control? That will be chaotic, confusion, you're not going to achieve nothing. Everything will be in a mess. You'll even have duplication and everything will happen. So what you plan, your planning document becomes your controlling mechanism. To control is really to review, to assess, is to measure. To measure what you planned, to see whether you kept to what you planned, whether you achieved it or not, and to see what are the gaps? Where have you, where have you deviated, where have you fallen short? And so the control measures, right, helps you to, to see your progress, to see what you have achieved and how you achieved it. It also tells you whether, whether, in your what control measure, did you appoint, did you want to point the right staff member? Because if you didn't, if you didn't perform well, that means there's something wrong. Did you, did you what, acquire the right, right materials? Did you get the right supplies? Are you using the right process? Are you using the right equipment? So these are some of the things that, well, obviously you've got to, you've got to check, alright? Now please understand this, control, control is done at, at every stage, right? I just want to go very quickly, we must hear of it, is what we call pre-control. Pre-control means you was able to check everything before you start your work. You must check everything before you start your work. Because then be very foolish, when you don't check it and you start your work, then you realize that you're using a wrong process, the wrong equipment and, you know, then things will go wrong. You double check and you correct it, even before you start your work. And then, that's what you call pre-control. Then you get what, second thing is what we call the concurrent control. Concurrent control means you're actually checking your work while the work is in progress. And if you pick up something not right, then you must stop it. Stop it and find out what's the problem, identify what are the issues and, and, and bring, and what, bring what the corrective action. Otherwise, you can be foolish to let it go, because that's going to affect and compromise the end result. That's what we call concurrent control. Not only you, not only you check before the work starts, but also while the work is in progress. And then, and then your final control is, which is the third control, is what we call post-control. Post-control is, it is the most comprehensive type of control, that means when the work has been finished and done, that is involve more work now, where you're going to check everything, everything, from your staff, your processes, your equipments, the job requirements, what was required, that is done, alright? Alright, so, and so, and so the control is very, very important. Now please understand this, also it helps managers and leaders to check that now when they start, before they start the next cycle of planning, they're able to identify where are the positives and the negatives, where are the strengths and weaknesses, where there've been good practices and bad practices. Where there've been good practices and bad practices or even average. So you can rectify that and bring some correction to that before, before you start a new phase of planning, organizing, leading, control, so that you don't repeat that. So that also give managers they've got the indication of what, right, what to change or what not to change. It's what I call, good practices, you always reinforce it. Good practices, good behavior, always reinforce that and you motivate them. But bad practices, bad behavior, bad approach, bad attitude, bad results, was able to deal with it. Uh and, and make sure you bring changes so that you don't repeat it. Okay, right, are we all clear about that? Do you have your?
Yes, apostle.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yes, apostle.
Okay. Right, so it's important. Now, let's go through uh let's look at the managerial roles. You must have heard of this Henry Minsberg. Now, don't mix it up with, with Henry Fail. Now, Henry Fail had as a, Henry Fail added one more which is called to coordinate. Coordinate, you know, as I said, what you um, what you organize and where you bring a division of work, you need to, you need to coordinate, bring it together. Understand, when you walk into, walk into organization, it's like a body. The body is, is one body, but many parts, like your vehicle, like your equipments. Now each of those parts and organs have, have different functions. But you make sure that, that all of these parts, departments and, and units need to work together to fulfill the, the overall vision and purpose. So coordination is important and that's what um Henry Fail brought in that, in terms of how do you coordinate that. Because that's, that's important. You don't want, you don't want departments and units to work in competition with each other, in conflict with each other. They need to work in agreement. Imagine, imagine if a, if what uh certain parts and organs in a body don't, uh don't function together, don't be in agreement, what can happen to you? What can happen to your vehicle if, if what, if what certain parts in the vehicles don't work together? The vehicle are gonna move. Likewise, I mean your body will not function properly. So there's what we call a dysfunctional realm in this situation. Likewise, organizations are, are also, please understand this, I always say this, when I teach on the organizational management, organizational behavior, I teach that like, like human beings got a personality. Their vehicle got his own personality from, 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 from a, from a mechanical perspective. Their equipment got its own person, uh personality. Likewise, organization got a, it's got a personality. What I told you, organizational behavior is linked to personalities. How you behave, your own attitude, your approach. How you perceive things, how you address things. You know that some of the skills, alright, in terms of, I know, you must have good leadership management skills, but also critical thinking, analytical thinking. Uh also, what, accurate decision making, problem solving. Also dealing with conflict resolution. Now let's look at some of the roles, the three major roles that Minsberg, alright, uh that actually uh developed. I'm sure you must have heard of this, is what we call the interpersonal role. The first one we wrote, right, that was interpersonal role, and that is very, very much connected to what we call uh of the leading to, leading to tonight's study, which is organizational behavior. Alright. Alright, and so this normally comes from interpersonal role and three things to look at then in terms of your what figurehead, the role of the figurehead, someone that is in senior position. How they relate, how they begin to connect uh uh not only with them, but also in terms of externally. Okay? So they act like a figurehead, like, like, like my dean of a college, the principal of a college, like a CEO of a company. Or even a pastor or a, what a, an apostle that are heading of many churches and also the, the senior man of a church. But in any aspect, not only in the business world, not only in the corporate world, not only in government, not only in NGOs and private sector, whatever it is, but also even within religious circles. Also within the church. And the figurehead role is important, how you, how you interrelate with people. Okay? So I understand this, as, as a figurehead, you have to understand that you are, you what, are you leading the vision, you're leading the process, but you're also leading people. In a, in terms of fulfilling the purpose. So all managers ought to have what we call a leadership role. Not only a figurehead, where you, where you represent your organization, as a figurehead, you represent your organization, which you, and which we deal with, with public relations. The figurehead of an organization, the head of a institution or executive management, senior management, they, they actually present, they present themselves as uh public relations to the world. How they present their company, their institution to the world. And also in terms of, yeah, how you relate. And then also your leadership role that include how you hire, how you recruit, how you train, motivate and discipline employees. How you lead people, the process and, and the entire vision. Alright, and so this is what we call, and then also uh in terms of your liaison role. Right, are you liaising with people? How you begin to interact, how you begin to network with people, how you begin to communicate with people? Give people the information, the required information. Both within, within and outside the organization. Alright?
So can we say that it could mean the, how we um speak to all role players or stakeholders?
Yes, yes.
Keep in contact with them and have a efficient, healthy relationship with them in order to meet the objectives.
Yes, it's, that's very correct, yeah. See, I mean, yes, I mean dealing with, dealing with shareholders, that's from within. And also people that are connected to that business, shareholders, and also what stakeholders. Shareholders are people that they will share them, they will own the business. But uh but stakeholders are people, all are the people that are involved, like your employees, like your, like your what uh suppliers. Alright, like your what, like your customers. Like any other institutions that's, that's, that's directly or indirectly involved with the, with your business. So you've got to, you've got to um build up what we call your interpersonal skills, alright? Is it okay so far?
Yes, apostle, yes, apostle.
Alright, please, yeah, please don't be afraid to, please not only ask question, please uh uh just share. Right, you might know more, you've read some things and you, right, but please share and just add to this. So when we're looking at your interpersonal roles, so the figurehead is important as it become the public relations. How you, how you represent your institution, your ministry, your business. And also your leadership role, how do you lead? We just talked about earlier on, okay? The leadership role is important. You impact various aspects when you lead. And how you liaise. Okay, mainly with people with your what stakeholders and your what shareholders. Very, very critical, okay? And so the outside liaison relationship is important. Okay, because no business or no institution, no organization, whether it's private, public or faith-based, in a faith-based organization or community-based organization uh or, or even in the entertainment, you cannot, you cannot survive on your own. You must be relating to people on the outside. Because that's how you, what, you gain value. Increase in knowledge, ability, depth, you have resources. And you, and you better, I mean your business gets stronger, get better and you grow. So outside liaison relationship is very, very important. It then help your institution to gain more knowledge, more wisdom and also to grow and also to, to survive and to sustain yourself in all types of conditions. Okay? Alright, you've got the informational role. Okay, that was the first role that um that were Henry Minsberg. The first role, right, interpersonal role, there are three categories there. Your figurehead, your leadership and your liaison. So now we come to the informational role. Here again, once more, there's also three. So you've got three things here. Information, speaking about that you need to give out um uh uh what um uh knowledge, okay, um things that they need to know. Okay, so what you do, yeah, you've got to monitor. You serve as a monitor. So you monitor the information. Okay, all forms of information within the organization. So as a manager and a leader, alright, um like you get information from various sources. But how you monitor this information? Okay, and alright, the various types of information that's coming in, you know, there's an increase in knowledge, alright? Uh information technology has taken over. But also how do you monitor information? Knowledge from within. And also people know, people need to know that, not only your staff members and people within, but your shareholders, your, your what, stakeholders. Your customers need to know that, your what suppliers need to know that and how they in the, in the industry, in the what, the community. Alright, um so, so how do you monitor? So within the informational roles, you're, you could be a monitor. How you monitor the information, whatever, whatever, what type of information is, what needs to go out? How do you, how do you transmit? See, managers also, managers act as a conduit to transmit the information to the organizational members within and outside. Then you also come to the second role is what we call um, alright, um uh monitor is to observe. Monitoring is to observe. Alright, please note that if I'm gonna bring in, in the context, when we dealt with the control function. In the, in the control function, you get with monitoring, evaluation. Monitoring, evaluation, they are not the same, but they relate to each other. Monitoring speaks about observing, checking whether you do it correctly or not. Evaluation is a final um uh what, review process. Okay, final review process, what um you're not only final, but also during the process, where you monitor and evaluate what is happening. Right, and so, so you monitor the information. Organization cannot survive without, without knowledge and information. That's why you've got a, a knowledge management system in every organization. Okay, information that is only meant for your staff. That is not even revealed to other outsiders. But also they are generalized information that can be delivered to the, to the public, for example, on your website. On your website, you, you're not gonna give access to people. Information to people in the public. Okay, that, that, that is, that is only meant for your, for your organization. But then also on, um on your website, that's where you have the website, where, where certain information is meant for the public. They need to know whatever goods and products, instead of your pricing. What are the certain laws in terms of buying and, and what uh various aspects? So there are certain rules and regulations and certain information that's needed out there. So this is, right, how you monitor. Then, how you actually disseminate, right, that mean how you give out the information? How you make your information available at the right time? And what type of information is, is actually disseminated? Alright, giving out the information. Then addition, managers perform what we call, I mean the third one is managers perform, so you've got to be important, be very vital, what information you're gonna give out? Alright, that's the first thing. What information that you allow to give out? And then
Maybe you cannot uh give out um strategic information where competitors could copy your model, for example.
Oh yes, yes, uh uh you cannot go and give out your what, your what particularly design models. Um you know, even your, but even your pricing strategies, um yes. And your what, certain things that are, in terms of your, your what, investment strategies and investment policies. And yes, um so you've got to be careful, uh, well, you're in terms of that, alright, um. Yes, so you're not allowed to, to reveal certain things, okay? But obviously, when you want to, but the public need to know something. Otherwise, uh they'll not know what you're existing for. What is your business? So they need to know. You need to give them some information. That's why uh uh through your, through your advertisements, your websites and, and, and other things that you can give out to them, your pamphlets and so forth, you give them information. Okay, but you're giving them information that's relevant to them. Certain information is not meant for them, you're not gonna give it to them. That's important, that's where we, we have, what we call a knowledge management system. It's the information system that they're building, that they're actually protected. So you as a manager, what do you disseminate? Your role is not only to monitor, but to disseminate. You must monitor what information comes in, what, what information is, is what required. And then how do you disseminate, how do you distribute the information? And then your third role, within the informational role, is what we call, you, you become the spokesman, manager, perform the spokesman role. When they represent the organization to outsiders. Because you're gonna give out information. That's why I noted that the public relations officers, managers and you know, senior people, it's like when they ask to speak on behalf of the organization, when they, when the, when the public asks them questions, you've got to be careful what they give out. They give out information to promote the organization for people to know, but they don't reveal everything. So you become the spokesman. But you, but you, but you become the, what, responsible spokesman. Alright. Are we okay so far?
Yes, apostle.
Yes.
Are you learning, is it what, is it what, very interesting?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, it's very important, it's, okay. But all of these are important. You don't only apply it within like, within, within the organizational institutional context, but in your personal life. In your home, in your family. Even in your ministry, in the church, in your business. Okay, it's applied in every context, so it's important for us to get to know this. And then your third role, third Minsberg's role, first one is, is what they call um interpersonal roles, second one is informational role, and third one is the decisional roles. Yeah, it's got four aspects here, four roles here in this, in this uh decisional roles. The first one is you become the entrepreneur. Alright? So what is, it's, right, this is not just only just uh someone starting a business now. But within your role, within an institution, you go and initiate and you oversee new projects. That will improve organizational performance. So talking about entrepreneur is, is the one who is visionary, one who will begin to pioneer things, initiate things. It's not only entrepreneurial role is not only applied only when someone go and start a business. But you can be a manager within any company, you can still initiate and oversee new projects. It's still involving, alright, in terms of uh It's still involving, all right, in terms of, uh, coming proactive and, and, but pioneering new things. All right? And that helps to improve organizational performance and also have to improve their, uh, their, what, their, what profitability, and also their, what position in, in that industry. And the second one is, you become also a disturbance analyst. All right? Were you able to, right? You're going to correct. Where you take corrective actions to respond to unforeseen problems, issues. Okay? You know, problems and issues and people's behavior attitudes, wrong beliefs can cause a lot of disturbance within, within an institution. So as a leader, you become, one of the schools I mentioned earlier on, conflict resolution. Problem solving is linked to this. How do you handle those disturbances, unforeseen problems that taking place? And we have a lot of, you know that. Every institution, no matter where you are, organization, you must have some form of, uh, disturbances, unforeseen problems.
So Apostle, can we say like, for, for example, you know, when COVID struck?
Yes.
Then management has to quickly, um, and make adjustments to be able to overcome that in the work situation. You know, like get stuff to work from home and so on.
Yes, yes, it, but, but yes, uh, yes, uh, thank you for that, yes, it was, it was indeed a, an unforeseen problem. Okay, obviously it affected people, affected everyone, and also it caused a lot of, uh, stress because not only, not only serious infection, but death. So they, so they had to be very quick in terms of how to handle this, because COVID nineteen has caused a disturbance all over the world. For personalized families, institutions, uh, society, you know, we, to a point where they, they locked down, I mean, locked the people for a long, long time. Five levels of lockdown. Yes, great, that's a very good example. But there's many other disturbance analysts, you know, like economic crisis, like what we've been to political instability in our country, unrest. And there's many other issues, but again, not only from the outside, please, I understand this. Things that can happen from within. Your problems from within, with staff, with management. Wrong process, wrong systems. So it's, right, so it's both, uh, I mean, uh, from both environments, from, from your internal environment and your external environment. Okay? Is it okay? Does it, uh? Does it answer? All right, that's important, okay. Anyone else want to say anything? One of the things, uh, here, if you may, if you, I'm going to say this. How do we measure a good manager and leader? The one that's able to make good decisions on a, on a, on a regular basis, informed decision, informed, good decisions. The one also able to resolve problems.
Maybe one who also has foresight and insight. Foresight to see problems developing ahead and take corrective action.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 you, you have to develop, uh, yeah, but also, yeah, that comes into your, but into your planning. All right, planning also, uh, yeah, that's important, but you, uh, 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 it's what we call, it goes under what, uh, risk management. You know, where you're, where you plan, where you plan to, and you, like you foresee. And it's right, you've got to be, you've got to be critical thinker, but you're also going to be a natural thinker as well. You know, uh, thinking also for the future. Where you would predict, uh, but you're going to stick further, uh, to, to Jacob.
Yes, uh, I think like, for example, if, uh, there's a change in the current bank rate.
Yeah.
Or maybe the foreign exchange rate. So the company or institution has to adjust accordingly to maintain the profit margins and so on.
Yeah. All right. Thank you, but yes, I mean, you live in the world, yes, uh, Krishni?
Yeah, everything you thought is very good, because, um, being in the banking sector, you see this clearly from the top level to the bottom. So you see the, the structures as you are explaining it, you know, plays out so well.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Can I add? Okay. All right. Okay, is okay, can I continue?
Yes, Apostle.
All right, yeah, so it's, it's very, very vital. Yeah, the, the, I mean, the reason why I made the statement. See normally, normally people measure, normally people measure, uh, someone to be a good manager and leader in terms of their, in terms of their knowledge, in terms of the qualification. Okay? Not necessarily, not necessarily, uh, what, highly qualified and experienced person can be good manager and a leader. To me, the one that's able to what, uh, make, uh, make informed decisions. And when you talk about, and I teach a lot of decision making, uh, uh, decision making got to be informed decision. Whatever, when we mean informed, you must know, you must know what happened in the previous five years. Okay, for example, if you want to, um, okay, if you want to expand into a new area. For example, now you've got a strategy now to, to launch up into a new area, you want to expand your business and open another unit or another division. So you need to look at in terms of what happened five years, what has happened five years in that area, in terms of business expansion? Now what is the receptiveness in that area? What, and I mean, and my, our, what response are, are the people to the businesses? Spreading in your type of business. Okay, so you've got to be informed, what happened five years than what's happening currently? You always look at, when you make decisions, you always look at three, uh, what, what, three dimensions, or three timeframes, what happened previously, what's happening currently, and what you expect to happen in the future. That's what we call prediction. That's what you forecast. And so it's important that informed decision is very, very important. All right? And so even when you want to introduce a new product or a, a line of products. That's what it means to be informed. Okay? What have you doing in life? You've got to, you've got to know what happened in the past five years, twenty-five years, what's happening currently, and what will, what will you, um, envisage that will happen in the future? Okay? And to me, uh, to me, that's how I, I will rate you, whether you're good or not. And the second thing that I will rate you to be good is, how effective are you in, uh, problem solving? Are you, are you a leader that's highly qualified? Might have experience, but, but you may not be a good decision maker. So how many of the decisions you made over the years into the percentage worked out well? And how many of the problems that, that you encountered that came into, came into your plate, were you able to resolve? You may, you may never heard this. But to me, those two areas are very, very important for a, for a, for a manager. Because that'll, that'll determine the success in a, in any organization. Making, making the right decisions. And also able to resolve issues. And also to, you know, Pastor Jacob says you've got to be, uh, you know, I mean, um, uh, is what we call forward thinking. Forward thinking in order to, to make forward movement. This is where, this is where the critical aspect comes in. Innovative and critical thinking. Managers and leaders are always thinking. They're not only thinking in the boardroom, not only thinking, but they're thinking on their feet as well. And I always say this, leadership and management is not about yourself. You cannot, please understand people, God, when you're dealing with decision making or, and you're dealing with problem solving, you cannot involve emotions. And you cannot be very impulsive. And you cannot be biased. Because you are thinking for the organization, you're thinking for the people. What's best? That's why I always say to people, management leadership is not meant for everyone. This is not about the title, it's not about the money you earn, not about accolades. Can I make decisions and lead the organization in the right place, in the right way, both from the past, present, and, and into the future? Because what you do, in terms of problem making, lots of institutions, problems have destroyed a lot of institutions because managers and, managers, I mean, they seem to be. And the thing, they are, uh, you know, uh, they're what, seasoned enough to deal with it, but they, but then they make a lot of bad decisions.
One of the aspects there, Apostle, may be to depersonalize issues. To resolve issues amicably, in order to resolve issues amicably. Seems like we can't hear the Apostle.
Yes, um, Pastor Jacob, I've got the same problem.
Okay.
It's just, he'll reconnect, I'm sure, let's just wait a-
No, we're just, uh, while waiting for you, continuing on, uh, the allocation of resources.
Yeah.
And Vernon brought a very good point, when he mentioned that, uh, his company, which is a steel company, purchases, uh, huge quantities of steel at a lower price. And then when the prices go up, they are able to sell it at the increased price and thereby generate a higher profit.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, no, thanks, uh, in fact, uh, and that's why it's important, you know, it's, yes, it's, um, uh, you've got to be, you've got to have knowledge of what's happening, all right, in terms of globally, also in your industry, within the organization and, and various aspects, so. And so management leadership position is a very, very critical position.
Hmm.
Yeah. And I always say this, when I say to people, yes, as much as you need that knowledge, you need that degree or whatever it is, but that's not the first requirement.
Yes.
That's the requirement, and you know that, Pastor Jacob, you'll know that, and also some of your seniors. Uh, um, some people that never went through formal schooling in university make, uh, make some of the best managers and leaders in the world.
Yes, they do.
They do?
Yes.
Because management leadership is based on, 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 in terms of your wisdom.
Hmm.
Wisdom. Be able to think, be able to apply and stuff. All right?
Yes.
I'm going to look at it, not that you don't need, you don't need formal qualifications, it helps. But that's not the first requirement. When I first said this over twenty-five years ago, people go shocked when I said that.
Hmm.
Yeah. And that's why today we see a lot of, lot of companies and government all over, highly qualified, got doctors. That's sad.
Hmm.
It's sad.
Yeah, Pastor-
Yes, Krishni? Yes, Krishni?
Yeah, in those days when we started, you had to start right at the bottom.
Yeah.
Yeah, even if it means delivering the mail to people, just to get to know the people working in the company and what they were doing.
Yeah.
And then they had a, a specific order that you have to move up, so by the time you lead, uh, get to a higher management, you know, everything in the company, which was good as well, even in strategy forming, so you knew exactly what is going on.
Yeah. That's very true. Look, look, I think, yeah, I think it's good to have a discussion around that. Other, others can you speak as well if you want to, uh, President Abashan, Vanesh Penny, and Vernon, you can speak on, because it's very, very interesting. What I found out, what I found over the years, my research, I'm a very good researcher, I observe things, I see it. I've seen a lot of people that don't have formal qualifications done, became very good leaders and managers, excellent. And maybe we can talk about a few minutes, anyone want to add to that?
Yes, Apostle, you know, uh, especially us as, uh, students of the Bible.
Yeah.
Uh, and we talk a lot about, uh, and we believe in, uh, supernatural involvement.
Yeah.
Uh, that takes, can take us a long way, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, when we have the anction of the Holy Spirit, and we can take decisions that are sometimes ten years ahead of its time.
Yeah.
And, uh, it'll turn out to be excellent decisions.
Yeah, no, very true, very, very true. Yeah. 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 So basically, as I said, uh, yes, Pastor Abashan, you say something?
Yes, Apostle, very true. True, as you said, uh, some people don't have qualifications, and, uh, it happened to me as well. I started off at the very bottom, and, uh, it was about two years ago when, uh, my, uh, boss came to me and said to me that I must not be a, a welder anymore, but I must be a manager. And without no qualifications, no certificates, but because of supervising and, and, uh, being a foreman in the, on the floor. Yeah, he called me to work in the office, and I had no qualifications. And, uh, but the, but God's wisdom and, uh, being a pastor of the church, and, uh, thank God that he showed me how to lead people and how, uh, how, how to get the people uh, to submit and how to be, how to have authority over them. And to lead them and to delegate, uh, certain jobs. And, uh, uh, management is a, is a very, uh, uh, hard thing, because you've got to lead people and it's, it's, uh, it's not a very easy thing. And all these strategies and these techniques, uh, is very important to learn. And we just thank you for that, Apostle.
All right, thank you, yeah, well, well, that's a very good example from you, that's an example, that's important, um, yes, um, so also it's not only, um, it's also learning from other people, seasoned people. You see? You know, you can go learn, you can, you can go good, uh, distinction. You know, as a decision making, you can major in that. But, but if you never serve under someone else that's more seasoned, then you can always do it in a trial and error. That's why you've got to learn, for you to be an effective decision maker, you've got to, you've got to serve under someone else that they've been proven. Seasoned person. Even in your home, in your family. If you, if you want to be a better decision maker in life, in family life, in everything else, you've got to serve under someone that's been proven. And learn. Management, leadership, decision making, problem solving, it is a heart and science. You don't become effective because you've got the knowledge, knowledge creation is just one dimension. But the most important thing is the application. How do I apply myself? And that's where South Africa has, is missing big time, in all aspects, in all sectors. Where they, where they're not seasoned. There's no level of maturity. There's no excellence, there's no proper application. So, uh, as much as people have got the ability to be leaders and managers, but no one, no one is just born a leader, no one is just born a manager, you need, you need, you need to conserve under someone else. And that is also proven in the word of God. Moses, I mean, uh, Joshua deserved to serve under Moses, Elijah, I deserve to serve under Elijah.
Apostle? Apostle?
Yes?
I don't know whether it's the right time to speak about this, but I believe that the miraculous also contributes to a large extent in how we manage an institution.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
I'll give you, I'll give you, I'll give you an example.
Yeah.
You see, it was, it was the end of the month, it was a Friday, and it was midday. And we had to remove a staff member from the P S R. You know, every state or government organization, every employee has a P S R number.
Yeah.
And we just could not get this done, okay? Because this person had to be employed in a different organization.
Yeah.
Uh, we, the, the staff at, in Pretoria, we're only able to do it because they were, um, implementing a new cell record, right? So, there was a person in, um, where was this, in, in K Z N, right? Who had the skill to go into the government, uh, I T, uh, system and make the change, right? He, he knew how to do it, okay? But, um, he had to get authorization, right? And, um, how it eventually happened, there was a supernatural intervention by God in all this. We phoned someone else in Centurion, I think it was, who, um, could put the code together. And it was quite a complex thing. But before the systems could close on that particular day, this whole transaction went through. So, the supernatural does miracles, does impact and enables the manager to be above and to be able to resolve critical issues at the very last moment through the help of God. I've found that on many occasions, to be true.
Yeah.
Amen?
Yeah, no, no, very true, very true, uh, in terms of, if I was supposed to bring that up. I see people always focus, and I've always said this, you know, even in our latest trainings, management training, and even at university, and I brought the point up. Even when they dealt that, uh, so when we went for a workshop on emotional intelligence.
Hmm.
And you know, people are focused mainly, for many years, they focused on, on, uh, on their I Q. The intellectual aspect, intellectual, uh, you know, I mean, uh, ability of a person.
Hmm.
But then, uh, when I started to do my PhD, in the early two thousand, uh, I focused also, because that time emotional intelligence was coming up strong, decided to develop that. You know, and tried to promote that, yeah, uh, in the area of leadership and management. Because you've got highly qualified, and when I did a research, of most of the CEOs, I'm talking about that time during, uh, period between two thousand and three and two thousand and seven. Most of the CEOs during that time, but even now, but I'm talking of my research, were actually failures. Failures, they were highly qualified. They had, they had experience and a knowledge, highly, 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 highly intellectual. But they failed because they lacked emotional intelligence. You know, we're able to, most intelligent, we're able to control your, your desires, your feelings. I mean, how you would approach people, how you relate, how you speak, how you handle things.
Hmm.
So what I found out, over ninety five percent of CEOs during that period, which I did my research for, failed. But yet, but yet, a CEO is the highest position in any company, earn the high salaries, all the big perks. And I found in between two thousand and, I'm talking about that period, the minimum salary, the minimum salary, just the salary alone, leave alone the perks and other, other what benefits, there's a salary alone. They failed to, they failed to identify, to develop and to prepare success when they leave. They left abruptly, they left because they paid for more money, and because they realized that, and they, and they leave before they get caught up.
Hmm, yeah, that's a favorite trick. Before they can be prosecuted, prosecuted, they disappear.
Yeah, and well, I think Vernon can, testimony and some other people were working, even Trishney worked in the bank as well. But I've seen that, I've seen that, and I always tell my students, wherever I train, I says, you know what, leadership and management got nothing to do with, first and foremost, with, uh, the focus is more on, on the what, it's salary. The focus is more on the stages of the position.
Hmm.
You know, many of these managers and leaders, they make decisions in the boardroom and in meetings, but never visit, never get onto the floor, never go and see their people, never go and see the process, never go and see what's happening. There's no contact, they're by here, they're making decisions for something that they're, that they're going to acknowledge of. That's the sad part.
Yes.
That's the sad part. Now, I'm a business in the context, when I was the National Dean for Richfield, the owner of Richfield, you know, uh, the private university. And they, and they're all nine provinces. They had thirty two, uh, they had thirty two, thirty two campuses, including six countries in Africa. And when, and when they were, they landed me from, from, from U K Z N, okay? Uh, they, they wanted me, they wanted someone, just, and so someone senior management, one or two guys knew, and we were, I never knew that, that they'd already made arrangements, so I was calling. And I sat, I sat before the CEO, the founder and the, and the CEO. I know this guy was the financial director for, for the, for the Yola's group so many years ago. And so I sat with him in his, in his, in his office. And they were quite large, sat with him, and then they wanted me to come in there. And then, um, uh, you know, to, to, to be the dean of leadership and business management. And that's one of the biggest faculty. And I had over like three thousand staff under me. You know, I've got a, I've got, well, I've got two deputy deans under me. I've got, um, heads of departments. I've got senior lectures, senior lecturers, ordinary lectures and junior lecturers. I've got coordinators, I've got ordinary admin staff and everything, I've visited all thirty two campuses. You know what? I'm saying this out of, out of my experience and what I went through, because the one thing I've learned, I learned it from my dad. I learned it from Apostle Fred Roberts, I learned even people that have, that have seen, that you as a leading manager, you've got to be hands on. You're able to be in contact with system procedures and with the people. For you to know what's happening and to make accurate and informed decisions. I always thought people, this is not about, uh, about managers and leaders, sitting in your office, surfing the net, having coffee, going for meetings, and, and come late and leave early, or whatever it is. You don't know what's happening, but you're making decisions. We've got an inaccurate model of leadership and management on this continent of Africa.
Hmm.
Yeah? I can safely say this, I can safely say this, I've done my research, I'm a manager and leader for a long, long time. I've got my PhD in leadership and management now, but eighteen years, I'm still doing research. It's getting worse. You see, people have got the wrong understanding of this. Leadership management is not about yourself. Or, or yes, coming back to the issue, and so, so I went to all my campuses, sat with staff members, sat with senior guys and honorary staff, and dropped my reports, then I saw. And those people in all of those campuses acknowledged this, they said, you know what? We've never had, the previous deans have never, this is what you have done here, you know, is something very, very honorable. That you, that you so concerned and value and respect for people and the system and the processes. And I told them, this is, this is what I've learnt. This is why I've always done it. And, and you know what, and when I identified, a lot of wrong things were done, a lot of wrong things were shrouded. A lot of wrong things were put under the carpet, people complained, staff members complained at all levels. When I eventually did all my reports for all of those campuses, and eventually the CEO got a, what, he got all of the reports and he had, he went through the reports, all of them. I did a comprehensive report for all the campuses. Compromise, that's the way I believe, I believe in excellence, you've been hearing me, excellence and quality, I never compromise. Lots of people don't like me, in the body of Christ, millions of God don't like me, churches don't like me. At even at universities, they don't like me, even senior people, even, even deans. Even the deputy vice chancellors don't like me because, because of the truth. So, so when this CEO picked it up, they had an institution, and he went through all of my reports. But he called me, sent me an email, he said, man, I want to see you, even phoned me. Yeah, now I thought, now you know what, this may be something serious, because that guy was a very, very guy, it's, I'm sorry, it's a very difficult guy to deal with. So I went in, I mean, not that he generally, I mean, he was, uh, but he's very, 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 can be very, very arrogant, very, very controlling. So I went in there and he says, he said, when I went through your reports, all of your reports, and I was amazed, I thought, I thought he's, you know, he sees something negative towards me. He said, I went through all your reports. He said, you've done a very excellent job, he says, he says, you do know that we did, uh, we did, uh, the entire institutional reports, but no, I just came in that time. But no, I did all this, I did it within, within one month of my appointment. Because I, I believe that I, I cannot go and lead an institution, even I came in, I'm, no, my people know the process, know the, I'm, I'm, I know everything, I must visit them. And when he went through all that, he says, you know what, all of your reports are accurate. He said, man, you are not aware, you are unaware of, 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 we, we did a comprehensive institutional report, sorry, audit, sorry, audits. From an, from an external audit, uh, internal, external institution, then, then, he said, all, all of your reports are accurate.
Amen.
But he said, but, he said, but he never took into consideration my recommendations.
And it's always, hmm.
Yeah, yeah, so you know what I found, I'll give you a, you know what I found out? What I found out, this guy and the institution were covering a lot of things, and I think that those institutions already, even though they identified it, but this guy never took that into consideration. Eventually, eventually I was told by my deans and senior people in the institution, said that, he said, this guy is going to hire on you, and, and he's, and, and he's totally walk you out, those were the words.
Is he a threat?
He made, yeah, he made my life difficult.
Hmm.
And eventually people warned me, and eventually I prayed about it, eventually, eventually I had to leave, because I found that he made, he made it very difficult for me to operate.
Hmm.
Now, I wasn't showing those areas to make you feel bad, but to help you.
Hmm.
To help him that there's some serious, there's some serious, I can call it, what, serious cocos in the closet, that they were keeping quiet about. You get my point now?
Yeah.
So what is the role of a leader and manager? You know, to destroy, you identify, you bring out things that are not right in order to put right, in order, in order to put them right. So.
Yes.
So what I found, and I'm a very, very disappointed, I'm very, very disappointed, I didn't want to leave. But based on, uh, I never suffered from, uh, uh, from pressure, and even I didn't realize that I picked up, I pretended, but I never suffered in all my life. And when I went to a private doctor, that, that, and he knows me very well, he says, Pastor, he says, what's happening with you right now? He said, but you never had, uh, he said, he said, when I know you're in medical condition, what, you never had, what, uh, what, what, uh, I've had, what, the pressure problem? He says, but even worse now, you've got, what, hypertension? He said to me, yeah, what are you doing? When I told him, I only mentioned Richfield, I mean, what, he said, oh, he mentioned the name of that guy, he says, that guy is ruthless? And it's bad news, you know what he told me, you know what my doctor told me, he said, you must leave. And the guy's a non-believer, I'm a, uh, I'm a doctor, very good doctor, I had a prayer about it. And eventually, one or two employees that worked for him, people came and told me, he said, well, I'm going to call me, he said, Apostle, you must leave. We know what I can say, so I had to leave. Uh, it's like a forced, I had to forcefully resign myself, because of this, otherwise, you know what I found out, Pastor Jacob and everyone?
Hmm.
You know, the guys don't tell you that, that institution got a very high turnover rate. People leave on the regulation, and that, I mean, look at that, I never had, I did a research, but see, see, see on the website, and people don't talk much about it.
Hmm.
When I went in, in my position alone, as a National Dean of Leadership and Business Management, later on I found out, four other deans left within the space of six months. Before I came up. And then after I left, after I left, I got news that one dean died of stress, and a few others got sick. What I'm saying today, how, uh, you see where the guys, it can make it so toxic? Is that when you involve in leadership management, right, uh, yes, Pastor Jacob, you wanted to say something, sorry, man, I, I interjected.
No, 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 what you're saying is the absolute truth, that's how it's being done nowadays. But I was just saying, on the positive side, um, God causes us to gain the goodwill of people at critical times in order for us to finalize certain key projects. You know, at a critical time, and it's only through his, through him that we can gain the goodwill of people in critical positions. To make these things happen, to turn around situations. Amen?
No, no, yeah, no, very true. But let me just, um, say this. As I said, for a long, long time, we always focus on the I Q of people. But we never focused on the, on the emotional intelligence, which now they're bringing to balance. Okay? You can be highly qualified, highly experienced, but yet you can be a failure, because you've got, you've got a very poor, a low emotional intelligence. For example, you see a lot of money at the manager, you can steal, I mean, you can have control of emotions. You see a young beautiful girl, or, or, or you're female leading, you see a young beautiful guy coming, you're getting involved. And, and you mess up that, that you're going to control of emotions. Otherwise, you, you don't know how to, how to address people, you scream at people, you get angry all the time. You get frustrated, uh, you, you're people that, you're a person that judges too much, you're people that's jealous of others. You make people that difficult, because, it's because emotions deal with your, deal with your personality. And the third thing that Pastor Jacob spoke about was very interesting, and when, and when I saw in this, in this workshop and this training, all, I mean, all our academics are sitting there, highly qualified, professors and doctors, heads of departments and deans are sitting there. And I saw that they were not bringing up, bringing up the third dimension. The focus, spoke more about the intelligence, about the I Q, and spoke about, about, I mean, the workshop was called emotional intelligence. And they spoke about that. And when I told them, you know what? You're, you're all missing something here as well. The third thing is something to be the spiritual intelligence. And, and I was shocked when they asked me to explain, because they're not sure how that fits in. And I was like, darling, leadership is so long. And you didn't understand, when I told them, man is made of spirit, soul and body. They can't only focus on the intellectual part of a, of a person, can't only focus on the emotional part of a person. I said, that's why, that's why every institution, every organization got codes of conduct. You've got values, statements, but people can't keep it, you know why? Your, 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 your I Q only, but only able to do that. Your emotional intelligence is only able to do that, it's only your spiritual intelligence. It's a conscious of what it means to, what it means to do right and wrong. It's a conscious of what it means to, what it means to do right and wrong. Then they fully understood, no, that's very true. So right now, right now, there's very little, very little is spoken about the spiritual intelligence. And you're right, Pastor Jacob. I see even, even Christians that are in leadership and management, which are not really serving God properly. Are really, are really messing up. Even Christian businessmen are fooling around and messing around, not doing it right. Because I, and we all know that spiritual intelligence is the one that is like a cherry on the top. And if you can get that, in fact, if you're to teach that first. You should bring the spiritual dimension first before you bring the IQ and the EQ. Right, the IQ is your intellectual quotient. The EQ is the emotional quotient. But you need to bring, they were to ask you, which is a spiritual quotient, which is called the spiritual intelligence. And that's why we find leadership and management throughout the world. If you really measure it generally, it's really not good. We have codes of conduct, we have statements of values, and people still gonna mess up. Why? Because the spiritual, the spiritual intelligence is not in place. All right. Uh, what, does it make sense to do, did you hear me in that?
Yes, it is, apostle.
Yes.
Thank you, apostle.
I've, I've never heard people speak about spiritual intelligence. And when I spoke to the people, I'm talking about senior people there. In top leadership management, they asked me to explain. And I'm saying, oh. Imagine they are running the institution with a lack of spiritual intelligence. And then they understood, they said, then we need to explore more and more of this. I said, yes. I said, the order is wrong, the order is wrong. And they were amazed when I said that. And I was amazed by myself that they, that they at this level, they have so many years of experience, don't know about this. And so it's not, that's why you need to bring a balance. I always tell my students, knowledge creation, knowledge never makes you mature. Knowledge will never make you to behave correctly. You see everywhere, in every industry, highly qualified people are the ones that bring a lot of messes, a lot of nonsense. And when there's no proper emotional intelligence. Emotional intelligence will never operate if you don't have your spiritual, if you, if you don't have your spiritual intelligence linked to it, it'll never work. And I have the privilege, when I was at the D U T, I lectured in every faculty, many, many departments, and God allowed me. They were amazed, they said, but we've been so long, but how did you come? Then I understood the word, when the Lord told me. That I, that I'm sending you into what the public universities, sending you as an apostle. And I've seen that. I've seen how senior people have been, you know. Not really, not really success. How do we define success in your management and your leadership role? There's something interesting tonight. There's something that I need to write about, and I want to write.
Amen.
I might for a long, long time. Yes, apostle?
As you know, that's essential. It's a good thing, must go ahead.
Yeah. And this is not only, this is not only for organizations and institutions, but also for churches, also in your homes, in your families. Why are families wrecked up? Why are marriages wrecked up? Why do they not have a role models? Even children don't even trust their parents. They don't even follow their parents anymore. Why is society? Let's, let's look at society as a whole. Let's look at our provinces, our country as a whole. Look, look at the continent as a, look at Africa. Leadership is a major problem in Africa. There's no real leadership in Africa. Whether it's political, economic, social, in the churches, there's no real leadership. No real management. And that's what the Lord has put a burden in my heart. No, please, I'm saying this thing here. I begin to see the leadership, I mean, a lot of people, even when I'm at school, wherever I go, even the spotting, wherever I go in the country, they say, no, what, you must lead. Only why they tell me to lead. And I always shy away from it. And I remember twenty five years or thirty years ago, when a team of apostles and prophets kept on overseas. And I remember this one man of God, there was a team, there was a perspicory of apostles and prophets, highly anointed people. He said from everyone, and he prophesied over me, he says, he says, he says, God says, I, I, I have ordained you to be a leader from your mother's womb. Step into it and obviously spoke about the episode he called, well, I knew that, I knew that I was called to be a leader. Well, you're done, boy. And I'm going to say this as we close, I know time is gone. A leader is, a leader is the one that influences also to, to motivate people. Let me do one thing. A leader that, you know, you know, those that are involved in leadership, fully manages, leaders, the managers. That when you come as a perspicory leader, when you come into a context. You're able to identify what is right, what is wrong, whether there's a divide or not there. If you come into context and you can't identify and you can't identify this and highlight it and put it right and give instructions to put it right, that means you're not a leader. That's how fine spreading the churches, and let's focus on the churches today. Lots of our pastors need to go for leadership training. And when I have leadership training, very few of them come. Your gifts and your anointing doesn't make you a good leader. That's why the congregations are not led properly. And so it's important that you need to put things right, identify things pretty right. Leaders change the atmosphere. When you walk in, you're able to pick up, you, you, you have that, I'm telling you, you're able to discern. I'm talking from my personal experience, when I walk into a home, when I walk into an institution, walk into a church, I just walk in and, and spend some time, you have to, you pick up the atmosphere, pick up the vibes in that place. But is correct or not, that's a leader. Not everyone is called to be a leader. There's a, there's a, there's a major difference between a leader and a manager. And so maybe look at that some other time. Okay? I just want to close off this, what we already started here. But are you, are you able to see these notes?
Yes, apostle.
Okay, in terms of, in terms of men's best role, we dealt with the, okay, with the interpersonal roles, informational roles. And I think the last, we were talking about the decisional roles. We spoke about entrepreneurial, that's the leader. To initiate, to oversee things and, and improve things, to come up with new things. Then also disturbance handler, one able to identify problems and bring corrective actions. One forward, answering problems or even seeing problems. And the third aspect is resource allocator, I think, I think you were talking about it. A manager was able to allocate resources, but, but effectively. All right. And, and there's got to be a, what do you call, a furnace in the, in terms of the distribution. The furnace of your distribution. And then you've got resources, you've got so many departments within the organization. But, but when we're talking about furnace and equity, equity doesn't mean every department will get the same allocation. It's based on in terms of what is the gap there. Okay? What are the needs there? Some department will not meet a lot of, of, of resources compared to other departments. It's based on their function and, 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 and what is the magnitude of their work. So equity is not based on, on everyone get equal, that means same quantity. No, it depending on the magnitude of your work, the intensity of your work. And then in terms of, in terms of, in terms of quantity, and also in terms of what is required to be done. So, so, so how you manage the resources is very, very vital. Effective with an efficiency in the coming. All right? So that everyone get the right resources. Get allocated resources according to their, according to the workload, according to what they need to achieve. So when you allocate too much resources to one department where they, where, when they don't require it, then there's going to be a use and abuse there. So you've got to be careful. So how you manage that? And, and when you're talking of resources, dealing with human resources, physical resources, monetary resources. Dealing with, with the raw materials and so forth. And your last role, the managers will play within a decision role is you become the negotiator. Where you're able to, able to bargain. Now, I know those people, when we talk about negotiations, we always think about only for salaries. And that's the sad part. I know this is, that's how, that's how they presented in the workplace, that's how they presented in the generations. That when you negotiate or you're a negotiator, it's only for, it's only for salaries. And every manager and leader must have their skill. You negotiate in terms of where both parties or parties involved. Right? Where they bring their plans and what they, what they desire. And then you come to anybody, make your own decision, where all parties are now, are, are satisfied. Right? They've been met, uh, anyway, okay, with, 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 with the desired results that they were expecting. All right? You can not, you don't only do with salary and money, you can negotiate workloads. You can also negotiate working times. All right? You can negotiate a lot of things. So as a manager, you're, you're always negotiating with your staff. Internally and externally with, with stakeholders, shareholders, you are negotiating what? Which is, right, which is the better option for both, I mean, for the party's concern. And so negotiation is important, is one of the important skills. How you go about coming up, coming up with, with an agreement that satisfies all the parties. Right? Generally. Okay? Are we okay with that? Any, anyone want to say anything on that?
That's okay, apostle.
All right, okay, we close tonight. Anyone want to say anything else? I mean, anything that, whatever's been discussed tonight, or, or are there any questions? Anything that you want to raise up? Any question you raise up or, or any comment or, or anything that you want to contribute? No one got any questions? No one got any comments?
Apostle, this will always, will be applicable also when it comes to the spiritual side in church as well. So we're taking this study and we're going to apply it in church ministry as well.
Yes, yes, yes. All of this. Probably we done in a, in a way that we led with the Holy Spirit as well. That's important. Okay? And so all these are, all these are principles and guidelines. It helps you to become an effective leader in the church, in your home, in your family, in your marriage, in every, in every aspect and context of life, in every situation. Yes, 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 that's true. Very true, I would say. But anyone else, before we close and drink?
Everything that we covered today is very important and it is the blueprint of, of business, our lives. And over the years, from the eighties, we've seen that deteriorate. And it's because of less skills in the workplace. Because in those days, you couldn't just, just get into a job and just do it. You had to basically spend a month with somebody to watch them and see how they're doing everything, even walk around with them. Meet other people in the company. And then you go on a, a physical training, training for about a month. Or where you go into a training center and you learn every aspect of that role in the business. And then you come back and then you spend another month doing the job and you have somebody overlooking you. And over the years, that has disappeared. That's why we're seeing businesses, you know, have that shortfall now. So it's very important what you've taught us today because this blueprint has changed. And a lot of companies now are realizing that and they're going back now to wanting to provide skills in the businesses and in their companies. Even the training aspect as well, because, you know, constant training is also what helps the business grow. And that comes from a leadership point of view, where they recognize where training is needed. And, and give the people the training in the companies so that it can grow. And we see that even in all aspects, even in the church and in our homes, we can use the same thing. Because if you don't have a proper structure to follow and a guideline and a vision and a goal, it's going to be very difficult. And we really see the change nowadays in leadership even. We're having people that are just going and getting their PhDs or degrees and they're being put on higher management. And they don't, as you said, they don't understand people's skills. And that's why we're having such large numbers of people leaving their jobs at the moment because of the pressure.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Yeah, thank you for that feedback and for that commentary. Very good, yeah. It's true that, we see that, major, the major field of leadership and management, we're all in South Africa, but on, on this continent. Uh, it's very, very vital because people are not taken seriously. People are pushed into these positions in all the businesses. And I say this, I'm not afraid to say this. Leadership and management position are only meant, should be based on merit. Based on merit in terms of are people skilled and trained? Are people ready in terms of, even, even, even with character, because character plays a part in part, are they were mature enough? To me, one of the things to be leader and manager, you could be mature. You've got to be wise. You've got to be the person that wants quality and excellence. And you know what you're doing. So, so this is, this is what lacking because we bring a lot of people, and it's hard to say, it's hard to say that affirmative action has, has really messed this thing up. Because we bring people into leadership position throughout this country and everywhere, where they're not, not really ready for it. That's the truth. And I say this when I lecture. That has failed. Years all the time, that has failed. I always say this, you know. You can bring people from a lower, like as Krishna mentioned that. And even personal master says, you know, but, but they came in there to start from the bottom and train and go up. But, but now that is reversed. Where we, where we putting people straight into higher position. And I made this many times. I said, this is where it's gone wrong in our country is because it's like, you know what? If I pose this challenge to students, I says, you don't come from your mother's womb and go straight to what, break up. Looked at me, some laughed and some realized, hey, you know what? This is where the system has gone wrong. Everything in life got a process, stages. So when you put, everything is done, what is on the last thirty years, most of it has been done prematurely. You don't want to eat fruit that have, that have been plucked prematurely. Even, even babies that are born. Even, even babies that are born prematurely are at risk of disease, even dying. They're going to be, uh, be given special treatment, even when being incubated for a while, this is what happened in our country today. Leadership and management even throughout the African continent, it's failed. So we need, we need season, yes, you can bring people to, bring people to process from lower levels and you bring them up. Never put people in leadership and management that never been schooled and trained properly. You're asking for trouble. It's a place, it's a place earmarked for only mature people, seasoned people, wise people. I see it all the time. All right, uh, okay, if, if there are questions, I'm wondering, uh, this, is the person that joined and he shows hand. Who is this person? Hello?